All right, and the deputy clerk has taken attendance, I believe, for this evening's public hearing, which are about to open on the preliminary budget for 2021. And we have council member Ben Tassell on remotely.
That is correct.
Awesome. So we've got all board members here. Before I open up the public hearing for public input on the budget, as the town board has proposed, just want to give a brief overview of what this budget does, how it compares to last year, and where we'll be moving forward for 2021. Throughout this budget process, I've indicated that due to many reasons, but primarily the COVID-19 pandemic, it's had a great impact on not only the 2020 budget, but how we structured the 2021 budget. So this is a very conservative budget. It's appropriate for these challenging times. We continue to meet the needs of our residents in this budget and reflects an anticipated drop in sales tax, which we are realizing now, we continue to realize, and we know based on the county treasurer's estimates, we'll continue to see a reduction year-to-date for sales tax in 2021. So that was a major factor in putting together-- Okay, you're right, sorry. Sorry. Oh, that's okay. So that was a major factor in putting this budget together, because so many of our funds rely on funding through the sales tax that we receive from the county. We've conservatively estimated sales tax for 2021 to come in around $2.39 million. I can tell you the actual number in 2019 is that we received was $3.295 million. Year-to-date, this year, 2021, we are receiving $2.653 million. This budget also, although we're able to meet the needs of our residents, with the continued level of service that we provided in 2020, the tax rate, that tax rate remained essentially flat with last year at 90, just over 97.95 cents per assessed thousand. So what that will do, based on the town's assessed value, we will be raising 1.4, actually 1.441 million in taxes. And to put this into perspective, with the adoption of this budget, because four years, three years ago, we eliminated the town's fire protection tax, this will have a direct savings on our residents of over $2.1 million over that period of time. So, you know, this is coming in unless they would have paid for taxes, you know, in the previous combined years for fire protection. The good news is we were still able to increase funding for our first responders. Again, this year, we were able to increase our allocated sales tax for fire protection by 2% and that number will be $509,629. This budget also stays within the state's tax cap. And that was also a primary focus for the board as we put the budget together, because if we were to break the tax cap, there's a negative impact on our residents who receive certain types of exemptions, property exemptions, and we don't want to delay any of the negatively impacts of those individuals. We reduced 2021 appropriations by just over 19% if you take out what we raised through for the library tax. So that number for 2021 for appropriations will be $7.254,642 million. And that's considerably less than what we had last year at just over $8.9 million. One of the ways we're able to do such a conservative budget is-- in the 2020 budget, we had earmarked some big projects that need to be taken care of. One of them was the highway garage roof, the 2020 budget, the highway budget. That alone was a $467,000 expense. We also had money in the budget for 2021 for two unfilled decisions at highway. We decided not to include them in this budget. Town was able to realize that there were $21,000 in savings there. And also equally as important, one of the goals when I took office was to start putting budgets together that were sustainable, that didn't rely on fund balance, and we've slowly been weaning ourselves off the amount of money that we use for sales tax. As a matter of fact, the general fund amount of money that we need to use for fund balance in this budget alone will be reduced by 81%. Similar to the highway TB fund, the amount of fund balance that will be used in the budget's balance has been reduced 49% from last year. Then town outside of the TB fund, amount of fund balance was reduced by 59%. And we're also able to realize some savings in fund balance for some of our water districts. They include Water 2 and Water 5, which will be using zero fund balance for those accounts. And then Water 4, we're able to reduce by 36% in use of fund balance. So that's the 2021 preliminary budget essentially in a nutshell. At this time, I'm going to wait to actually work the first one out before we open to the public.
I just want to say, you've done a great job in a tough 20-year, looking for a good year to do that, starting this pandemic is what I'm referring to. And I think it's a great budget considering the challenges around it. So thank you for that. Well, thank you very much. That was a good year.
Anyone else?
I just want to go with Kyle. I think with the uncertainty of or for sales tax and everything else, I think this is a pretty fair budget, not only fair, I think it's a nice budget that we put together and able to save what we can and keep everything to the bare minimum because we don't have, we're ready to fix it somehow. And I'm happy with the budget.
I'm betting that between you and our in-house fiscal, I think that the budget is nice, it's fair, and it's good for the community.
Yeah. One thing before I open up, I just want to add, because the public may be interested to learn, there was a story in the paper regarding whether or not we're going to send a sales tax to the county. If you read the story, certainly the headline, you get the impression that county residents, or county tax rate was going to go up for town and row residents. And I can tell you that, number one, there's no way of knowing that because the county budget hadn't been released, it was released today. And the actual tax rate has gone down from last year. So that's not an accurate statement, you know, about what our actions here on sending sales tax or not sending it to the county for this year. We just don't know what it's going to be, but it's not accurate to say that it's a guaranteed increase on the county side of the sales tax for our residents. So with that, I've got a little bit of housekeeping that I have to address. I'd like to read a notice that we have to give at the beginning of this public hearing. I have confirmed with the attorney for the town that tonight's preliminary budget public hearing has been convened in accordance with the governor's March 13, 2020 executive order 202.1 and all extensions, which suspend certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow a municipal board convene a meeting via videoconferencing. In accordance with the executive orders, the public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting, and transcript will be provided at later date. Town clerk has done a roll call of the board members, and there's a form present for this meeting. I've also confirmed to the town clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed. We have fulfilled our legal notice requirements by posting notice on the town bulletin boards and/or door, sending to the news organizations, et cetera, and posting notice on the town website. This is being recorded, and a transcript will be prepared. As you know, we have our public hearing for the 2021 preliminary budget scheduled for tonight. I hope the public hearing, if you wish to be heard, please use the chat or raise your hand feature, or if you're on the phone, please say question. We'll allow everyone who wishes to do so to speak. Please address any comments or questions to the board and speak slowly. After the public hearing is closed, we will not accept any further comments on the 2021 budget. Thank you for your understanding in this time. So with that, one other order of housekeeping. I'll ask the deputy town clerk to read the notice of tonight's public hearing.
This was published Saturday, October 31, 2020. Please take notice that the town board of the town of Moro, County of Saratoga, State of New York, are holding preliminary budget, public budget hearing for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2021, and November 5, 2020, at 5:30 p.m. via videoconferencing as permitted by the New York State Open Meetings Law and Executive Order 202.1 and all extensions. Due to the public health and safety concerns, the public will not be permitted to attend at the town hall at remote locations where town board members or department has been situated in or in any other location. The public will be able to fully observe the video conference meeting and will be able to comment during the public hearing for the budget. The link for the video conference hearing is http://townofmoro.org/livestreaming ASP. Please take further notice that the preliminary 2020 budget is available at the town hall, 351 Reynolds Road, Maroniore, online at www.townofmoro.org. Please take further notice that comments for the public, comment portion of the public hearings can be, one, set in advance of the meeting, or, two, through the Zoom videoconferencing of the meeting. Pursuant to Section 113 of the town law, the proposed annual salary for the 2021 elected officials are hereby listed as follows. Supervisor: $49,271. Councilpeople: Four, at $12,607 each. Town justices: Two, at $29,161 each. Town clerk: $47,076. Highway superintendent: $60,837. Dated October 30, 2020, Theodore T. Kuzner Jr., Town supervisor, Town of Moro.
Thank you, Tammy. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing officially. And I would just like to note that for record, by resolution at our organizational meetings, we typically have a five-minute limit for each individual to speak so that everybody gets an opportunity to speak, and then we come back. But I think under the circumstances of the town board is in agreement, we'll let people speak for, you know, an appropriate amount of time before we ask that the next person who's ready to ask a question chimes in, and then we'll come back, because, you know, calling in is a link that I think will try to keep things moving a little bit better. Is that okay? So with that, the public hearing on the 2021 preliminary budget is now open. Is there any member in the public that would like to ask a question? So we will keep the feed open, and we'd just like to keep it open until 6:05 or so. Oh, I don't know my hours of the track there. Councilman, did you hear that? Councilman Van Tassel?
I did, yes.
I think council member told me he just wanted to hear you.
It's nice to be wanted.
You were running silent and deep, and I wasn't sure. I hear you're there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at this time, I have no indication that anybody's on a telephone line or has requested through Zoom to participate in the public hearing. But we'll keep it open a little bit longer.
Okay.
We'll do five minutes. So while we're waiting for any public input, would the board like to close the public hearing tonight? After we're done with public comments?
I would be supportive of that.
Same here.
What could-- I'm fine with it.
So 5:48, between if we open the public hearing officially--
Five, yeah, 5:32, 5:33, yeah, 5:32.
So it's 5:49, and the board is okay, we'll go to 5:50. If we have heard no request to participate in the public hearing, move for a resolution to close, or a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, I guess 30 seconds remain. I have to put in pressure on them.
Is there a motion on to do this? Okay, I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Second, in discussion, hearing none of all favor. Any opposed, motion carried unanimously, the public hearing, the preliminary 2021 budget is closed. Okay, thank you, everyone. Appreciate your participation. Alan, I guess you'll be dialing back in here shortly?
Yes.
Okay. You want to stay on the phone just for an informal discussion? Only because it's time-sensitive?
Yeah, I can stay right here.
So I heard yesterday from--
We're still, we're still recording.
If we're talking about in A, panels must be mounted in the same angle as the roof's surface with a maximum distance of some number of inches between the roof's highest edge and the system, and may not extend above the line, 18 inches below the roof's peak, nor below the line on the roof where the building wall would intersect. We then, in C, have another comment that says panels on a pitched roof will not extend higher than the highest point of the roof's surface on which they are mounted and attached. I mean, it appears to-- I mean, it appears to contradict one another? Is there another interpretation or am I interpreting it correctly?
It actually, if A looks like it says it may not extend above the line 18 inches below the roof's peak. A says that and C is that it can't go higher.
Well, A says 18 inches between the roof's highest edge of the system and may not extend above a line 18 inches below.
It's between the roof and highest edge of the system, yeah? And may not extend 18 inches below. May not extend above a line 18 inches below. We can wordsmith it. I have no problem with doing that. That's why we're having this.
Hey, what does wordsmith mean?
Just creating a new business.
Oh, change the language, Derek.
Okay.
Well, there you go. There's a cap for the dead.
Great.
Again, I'm reading it and it's possibly my interpretation, but A seems to address both how far above as well as how far below and then C seems to address the same point, but the two conflict.
So is it the thought that if you extended it past the peak to say you take two thirds of it hung over the peak to get more exposure from the sun and then it looked like a little bit of a... I don't know. I would, I'm just trying to imagine the scenario where where it would extend higher than the highest point on the roof. Is it just to grab a little more sun and then got this thing hanging on top of the roof?
Yeah. Okay, so when I looked at that, I was thinking about you have a roof pitch and then you have the solar panel units that could be anywhere from like three inches up to 18 inches.
Oh, that's what you mean.
On that level of the roof along the, nearly the same pitch of the roof.
That's the way I understood it.
Right, but you wouldn't want, you wouldn't want to do a pitch of the roof and then 24 inches. I've seen a lot of that, if, after a check.
I can't understand what you're saying.
Okay, I don't have your microphone against me. I can't hear everyone there. No, I understand. I've seen some of those that you're talking about with the more than 18 inches.
Yes.
And they're not very attractive, that's for sure. It's considered once it lay flat on the roof, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, within, within just a couple inches of the roof. And I guess to have it as, so to mount it at the same angle as the roof's surface with a maximum distance of 18 inches between the roof and the highest edge of the system, meaning like the solar panel itself, which would be the top part, to be no more than 18 inches above the actual pitch or line of the roof. That's my thought. That was my take on that.
John, you spoke with, because this, yeah, and Jim, Jim put this line in the gym. So the conversation you had with him.
Yeah, I've been looking at this and I'm thinking, what does that mean about not to extend above a line 18 inches below the roof's peak? That I didn't understand either.
So maybe what we do is we put a question mark there and have that question to Jim.
Correct.
I mean, I think what that provides is say you were going to go up to the roof peak with your panels and then they are at the same pitch and they are 18 inches above. You've now created a maximum height higher than probably what may allow in the neighborhood or a roof. So I think that's.
But doesn't that, isn't that why C covers that?
Right. I would imagine if you were to go 18 inches off the surface. Now, I've never seen them. I've seen a lot of mountain systems and I've never seen them any more than just a few inches above. So I don't know if we're reading into it too much or, but I guess for simplicity clarity, I guess we go out and make sure that. I couldn't imagine.
I've seen them. There's one I think in Main Street, West Coast, where I've seen one of the businesses there, which is probably a good two feet at least.
Saying the angle.
It was on the roof.
Saying the pitch is the roof or it's pitched on the roof?
It's pitched out and off. It's up off the roof. So then a two feet.
So the most solar.
Right.
You want to have it like an angle of about 37 degrees, I understand.
Yeah.
And there might be some roofs that are less than that, so they might be pitched like the top of it. And to come up 18 inches, I can understand that, but if it's on the roof line, then you can't do that pitching.
Right. So I'm taking that in challenge. I think it's in there for good reason. To take out a pitch. You seem to think about a pitch, would you?
No, I think we need some clarity on that.
Okay.
I'm making a note to ask Jim about that.
Thank you.
Very good. So that was 149-97 Standards for Tier 1 Solar Energy Systems. Anything else you want to discuss on that page?
I don't have anything on that section. I don't know if any of the board members do.
Helen.
Helen. I have no other concerns other than, you know, addressing item number three, A and C. So as long as we can work that out, if I'm good.
Thank you.
So we will look into that and we'll ask, do you want to provide that to us, Carolyn, to get that answer or?
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions, comments on 149-97? All right, so I'd like to move on to the next.
We can go right to 98, why?
All right. All right, so 149-98 are the standards for Tier 2 Solar Energy Systems. And essentially just for refresher, anybody listening on the phone or the board member. All Tier 2 Solar Energy Systems shall be installed by qualified installer. Design, erected, installed in accordance with applicable codes. They shall require site plan review and approval. The, is a list of the requirements, D1, is permitted uses. And we have listed all Tier 2 Solar Energy Systems that use electricity inside of are permitted as accessory structures through site plan review approved from the planning board in B1. Two family residential are two agriculture one and two family residential are three, are four, five districts. General commercial, which is C1. Commercial communications, which is CC1 district. Labor and commercial, which is C2. Residential and commercial, C3. General manufacturing industrial, which is M1 zoning map. And light manufacturing industrial, which is at two districts. And these, this incorporates the changes from our last board meeting.
It does.
And everybody's okay with that for a moment. Does that save the second?
Oh, oh, I don't know. Yeah, okay, I think I got it all achieved.
The only change that you made at the last meeting was the districts. You actually never went through the rest of the specifications. That's what we're going to do tonight.
Right.
Okay.
So item two on section D is the height location. We've got them limited to 15 feet. Solar panels and mounts are oriented at maximum tilt. Height shall not exceed that distance. Section B, all components of the Tier 2 system shall be located in the rear yard and are subject to rear and side block line setback requirements of the zoning district with which they are located. These systems are prohibited to decide in front yards. Two C solar panel mounts of the system shall be positioned to minimize shading properly to the north while still providing adequate streamlined access for the panels. Any questions or comments on that section? All right, Helen, you have any?
No, I only have concerns on number three, but you're getting that.
Okay, so we'll move on here. No further discussion. Two, D3, which is lot coverage. These Tier 2 Solar Energy Systems, regardless of the lot size on which they're located, are limited to a coverage of 1,000 square feet or 20% of the lot size, whichever is less. The surface area by ground amount of solar panels shall be included in total lot coverage of the zoning district within which they are located. So we'll take that at this point.
Didn't we say 4,000 square feet?
Yeah. Sorry. I think we defined in the definition of Tier 2 numbers that don't match. And I think these numbers, unless I'm interpreting them wrong, should match what we've got to the definition. That's maybe what John was saying. It's starting to step on you there, John.
Okay.
So we just need to update that 4,000. I can't remember, what was the percentage that we agreed to or did we take that out last?
You did not do that.
Yeah, I don't think we said lot size.
You didn't say lot size.
4,000 square feet and or 110% of.
Of the 12 months prior.
Right, we should strike that 27%, or 20% out.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comment on three?
No.
All right, we'll move on to D4, which is required screening. This again is for Tier 2 solar systems. They are to be positioned so that the maximum screening from view of pedestrians, bicyclists and motorists on the public right of way and from the view of neighboring property owners is achieved. Supplemental architectural features, vermin, breeding, planting and fence installation that will harmonize with the character of property and surrounding areas shall we use to screen the view of the system? Do you have any comments on that?
Leave it up to the property owner to come up with the screen or hang or planning board.
Well, these require site plan review.
They do.
So planning board would be playing in required screening. Should we provide them with guidance on that or leave it up to the planning board to determine what shall constitute necessary screening?
I think what you could do is leave that as it is now and ask them to, when they look at it, weigh in specifically on that question.
Because I certainly, like some of those suggestions that I ran about screening in the NYSR document. Where they put, they require like, you're going to put pine tree, you're going to put an evergreen and then minimum six feet, you know, tall. I mean, it was not all a threat here too, but we'll let the planning board think about that and then certainly come back since we get so much required in such a way that it's going to shape the system. Well, obviously that makes sense, but I certainly, they should screen the view from the neighbors and the bicyclists or whatever is just on there, so. Okay. Helen, you, any comments, sir?
No, I'm good.
So anything else for 149-98 in relation to the Tier 2s?
Not for me.
And so that's good. Where do we move on to now?
The big one.
One that has a lot of.
All right, this is the standards for large, I'm sorry, standards for Tier 3 large scale solar systems. Section A begins with state statement. The large scale solar systems are permitted as a primary or principally used through site plan review and approval from the planning board within the agriculture one and two family residential are five district. General manufacturing industrial, which is M1 district. The light manufacturing industry, which is the M2 district, subject to the requirements set forth in the, of the section. The, I know board members have had strong feelings and recommendations for this particular section. One of the things that I would like to, before we get into the detailed requirements of that section, I think it's important that it brings the board's attention, you know, because that does encompass the agricultural district. I think it's important that the board members are aware of some of the statutory direction that is given to localities from the state. And actually, the first one begins with New York State Constitution as was amended in 1969. There's a section in there, there's subsection four, which specifically relates to protection of natural resources, development of our agricultural lands. And the first sentence in that section says, shall we have a policy in the state to conserve and protect its natural resources and scenic beauty and encourage the development and improvement of its agricultural lands for the production of food and other agricultural products? And then it goes down to say that the legislature in implementing this policy shall include adequate provisions for the payment of air and water pollution, excessive and unnecessary noise. And included in that section is the protection of agricultural lands. So starting with that, we can move into, or I like to highlight, from NYSR's perspective, there's documentation out there. We talk about guidelines for review of laws affecting small wind energy production facilities and solar devices. And you will find in the documentation provided by NYSR that there's, this relates to your smaller solar systems and they point out that in the agricultural markets law, section 305, which generally that whole 300 sections is the Ag District Law. Ag markets consider that wind turbines used to supply a portion of the farm's electric needs not exceeding 110% of a farm's anticipated demand to be on farm equipment. And the department also considers solar devices that cannot exceed 110% of the farm's anticipated electric needs to be on farm equipment. And I'll tell you why it's important a little bit later. Says if the farm is eligible for remote metering, multiple meters may be combined to determine the electrical needs of the on farm equipment. Turbine or solar device must be part of the farm operation, which otherwise may sag markets law, section 301, which is the Ag District's law. The reason this is important is because these types of systems underneath, under the Ag Markets Law have exemptions from citing requirements, certain citing requirements, which means we as a local government can't put in place policies that are counter to that. So it kind of removes our authority to regulate them if they meet within the confines of Ag Markets Law. So we had talked at the previous board meeting about having the planning board, have additional oversight, things like that. But I just want to like make it, make it, point out to your attention that, you know, the general construction of on farm buildings, and these are deemed on farm buildings under that definition. And using land for agricultural purposes within the county adopted, state certified Ag District, which we're talking about, the Ag District here, should not be subject to site plan review, special use permits for non-conforming use requirements. So that's something we need to take into consideration in our draft regulations of solar in the Ag District. Now, again, this is, this is related to the smaller solar devices that they're talking about.
You refer to our district system?
Yeah, did we define that strictly as 110%?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, so the answer to the question, that'd be Tier 2. But more importantly, one of the things I want to point out in the NYSR document says that the purpose of the Ag District is to encourage the development and improvement of Ag land and use of agricultural land for the production of food and other Ag products as recognized by the state constitution, article 14, section four. So what you're finding is that it's the state's intention to do all it can to protect certain types of. certain types of farmland, i.e. allowing them to be available for, you know, successful agricultural enterprises. And looking at documentation from our own comprehensive plan, it's important that the board keep in mind that, you know, this plan was adopted in April 2019, and there are recommendations in there regarding the Ag District. And I just want the board to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, it's spelled out on page 65 of the town plan that says the goals relating to our ag resources. The first one is to protect farmland and open spaces. Farmland, in this case, serves a dual purpose because of the fact that open space that contributes to the rural feel of the town while also serving as an economic benefit by supporting crop production. Number two, maintaining the presence of the Ag District as well as protection in forest and farmers and growers of the town. And most importantly, and this is what the point I was getting to, item three is that the goal of the master plan is to restrict development on prime farmland soils and soils of statewide importance to wind farms. So I think, putting together our proposal, we may, we need to keep in mind, you know, what the goals have been through the state constitution, through provisions of the Ag District Law, and our own comprehensive land use plan. And then also in the town plan, I just want to make sure that board members are aware that it's not numbered, but towards the back, under recommendations under Ag Resources, it says to save agricultural available soils from development whenever possible. So, I think it's important that, to be true to what we've adopted to, you know, the comprehensive land use plan, you know, we keep that in mind when we're, you know, putting any kind of restrictions or easing restrictions on what we do for citing in the Ag District. So, with that, we'll go down to the list.
Well, my question based upon that information, does that eliminate us being able to, or does that eliminate us from allowing any tier three solar plan or solar farm to go into anything in the R3 or R4 or R5 districts within the town?
I, I leave that to council, but I don't think so. I mean, that's totally up to the legislative body, what they want to have in there, including the draft solar law.
Right. The tier three ones are your larger ones, so those are the ones that aren't going to be really used for the onsite interview, the onsite farm equipment. So that first part I was talking about, that's really not what this section is. The part you talked about with the comprehensive plan, that's exactly what it is, is a plan, that's not a law. So you can, you should use it to guide your determination, but you should, you have it. It doesn't say you can't go against it. You can put these on there. You can put, you can decide where to put them in the district, you can keep them in prime farmland, you can take them off prime farmland. I think the point that the supervisor was making was just to educate the board as to, this is what your plan says right now. So how do you want to move forward with this? But it doesn't say you can't have it on.
So I was under the impression or understanding that pretty much everything in the R5 district is by farm, based upon.
No, that's not true in that. If you're ready for a conversation on that.
Yes.
If I can front-load that.
Yes.
I can do that first. So, there's been, there's been comments, discussion, that the draft law that we started working with here, you know, when it was presented, the board members, was written in a fashion that basically prohibits the ability to have solar anywhere in the Ag District. And number one, when this draft was put together, you know, I was working with council and our zoning administrator, it's actually mirrored on local solar ordinances from other parts of the state. This stuff wasn't made up. I didn't make it up. Attorney didn't make it up. We took a look at what we thought might work for the tax. So to work, to answer your question directly, so the Ag District in the town row is comprised of 8,386 acres total. And if you look at the prime and soils of statewide importance of that total, only 55% fall in that category, which is 4,575 acres. So we're already down to, you know, half of the acreage doesn't involve any category that we're looking to protect here. And, but not all of that land is actively farmed. So, of that total number, only 3,898 acres are actually farmed, which is only 46% of the Ag District, all right? So now you're looking at, you know, over majority of the Ag District has the potential for having solar raisin as our draft law is written right now. Now, if you look at those, those 2,898.
Just a question, just because the farm, of land, is that being farmed right now, does that remove it from that prime farmland definition?
No, no, it doesn't.
So it's still considered prime farmland even though it's not being utilized as prime farm?
The prime farmland is based on USDA soil classification.
Right. So with that, I'm thinking, what I read in this was that we shouldn't be allowing solar farms to be placed on prime farmland, even though those, those lands aren't being utilized as farming or aren't being utilized to grow crops, et cetera. And when I saw that, thinking that, it's kind of like, there's areas here, I know people that went for it, that might be construed as prime farm lands, that in my mind would be a fit for solar arrays, solar farms.
So, so can I contest the numbers? I haven't got them drilled out.
Okay.
So, as I mentioned, 46% of the total acreage falls in that category of prime, I'm sorry, of actively farmed land in the district. And of that total, approximately 4,000 acres, only 1,947 acres are classified as prime soil. And of that 338, 98 acreage, only 323 acres are deemed that farmland is statewide importance. So, the bottom line is only, we're only looking to protect 27%, 27%, almost only a quarter of our Ag District by the way that was drafted. And that was done, as I said, you know, not making it up just for the town row, it was, it was taking what has been accepted and approved and works well in other parts of the state.
An area on our map that you can show us that that 27% covers?
I do have a map of that, I can provide it. I don't think I have it now, and if I do have it, it's too small to really see. But I have it in soil and water conservation, I can get that for all the board members.
I'd like to see it. I'd like to know the area we're referring to.
Yeah, so, so, so the point of all that, you know, we're, with this draft, we were not looking, I was not looking to ban solar arrays. And when I say solar arrays, there, just I mean the commercial ones. Obviously, I'm wholeheartedly supportive of allowing the tier twos, which are 110% used on the operation. I don't have a problem with that. But, you know, I think we have an obligation to protect that limited resources, because we're not making any more of it. And I thought by having these definitions in there, we still allow the use of a majority, three quarters of that property in the Ag District for solar, but we're looking to protect that, that small portion of highly primed and soils, and soils of statewide importance.
Can I just ask for clarification on those numbers again? Are you, when you got down to 323 acres?
Yep.
Out of 8,386 acres?
Yep.
Is that only 3.8%?
Yeah, but that's, so that's land that's classified as lands of statewide importance.
Okay, okay.
So we have, I think we have two, two different definitions in there. We've got prime, prime soils, and then those of statewide importance.
Right.
There's two separate definitions in essence.
So the other one was 1,947 acres?
According to the numbers I have from soil and water conservation, which are from the USDA, are acres of prime soil.
All right. Then, so that question, I was just trying to.
Yeah, so, so, so the purpose of that is, as we go through that, and we're talking, we're looking at our definitions, you know, I think that's something, you know, that puts it more context for what we're looking to, what we're looking to allow and what we're not. And, you know, I thought it was important that the board members hadn't had a chance to read or review again the comprehensive land and view what the recommendations were.
One last question, sorry. Is it, is it all possible that any of that 323 acres is also part of 1,947 or are they two separate groups? I'm just saying, you know?
No, so, so the 1,947, that's prime soil.
Yep.
You have to add 323 into that, which is soils of statewide importance. That's what you get. I get a 27% out of that.
Okay, I didn't know if any of that 323 was included into the 1,947, because it would make it a smaller percent than ultimately was.
Right.
Any included in there?
So, anyway, so we can.
Well, I just got a couple of quick things. You know, I'm a probably a righteous person, and I understand people in the Ag District law keep their individual statements at hand. I also think they have a right to develop a property as they see that as we see that. Putting undue restrictions on people for using their property for purposes of state importance, you know, seems about, in Harley, if I'm right, I think we discussed this one other time, that New York State budget for 2021, there's a big push on solar, push for solar energy, and that, that New York State will start dictating where can be put, where solar can be, can be put. And if we don't come up with something, what I'm trying to say, if we don't come up with something reasonable and not overly restrictive, I understand if you stay in New York, then it goes over. Is that?
Not exactly, Jenny. I think what you're talking about is what went into this year's budget, 2020 budget.
Okay.
And that was, they are, for the larger, over 25 megawatts, they, those projects have to go directly to what's known as a citing, 100% citing determination and process. That takes it completely out of the government's hands. It's for the large, large ones like that. So yes, everything you have in here, if it's over 25, 25 megawatts, irrelevant. These are for below 25 megawatts.
Okay.
Right. And that's, it's, it's only new in that it's expanding the statewide, statewide impact on it, statewide, looking at everything. 110 citing is always down there, but these, they're expanding their reach over it, that's all that means. And the governor does, and he has been pushing for more green energy, more solar energy, and that was big in his, in his budgets here. So yes, but for this, you still have to have this in place for those that are, you know, 24 megawatts or 20 megawatts. You have to have something like this in place. And at that point, the government, government doesn't comment and say, yes, you have to go by ours.
Good. Back to God's point of trying to keep the agriculture district, leave it the agricultural. And I think by putting too many restrictions on it, there are a lot of farms out there, a lot of properties out there that are hurt, that are hurting. And I think we have to try to watch our restrictions, placing these sites that could hurt some of these working farms even more. Because the alternative we're made, they can't say sustainable, they'll put in, develop all that property out there, develop it with housing, housing developments and stuff. Not want to see it out there either. I don't want to see, I love the Ag District like the Ag District. I don't want to see it all coming with solar panels either. I think there's a balance that we've got to do. We got to, while we're strict as we are, but we could find ourselves looking like Clinton Park with all these housing developments and stuff instead of the agriculture district that we have now, which is so pristine out there. So I think, you know, by putting too many restrictions on, and not letting these things be placed where, you know, there's places out there, I've heard, you know, a few of us in first economics, that are ideal for these things, but then that might not fall in because of our restrictions with the, with the, you know, the blanket, I forget how it's, but anyways, with these restrictions that we put out, it might not be able to be placed there, and then we're looking at the alternative, which would be developing out there, which I don't want to see that either.
Right. And to negate your sentiment of the valid, just to say, I do believe there's restrictions on housing that's, you know, allowed in that district at this point.
You still have more of those, you might as well see out of that district.
But, but I think, like, correct me please, but I think you need a certain amount of road frontage.
So you need 250 foot of road frontage, must, you know, you do a shared driveway, you'd need five acres to build a single family home.
Right. So, so we have some protection there around, so we, we don't have to worry about housing tracks coming through to the Ag District currently. So I think that's good.
Perhaps we have farms that are wondering, that we've got property out there not being farmed, you know?
Right. And I just wanted, because I had that same question to you, like, because it seems all become farm or housing.
Development.
And then I was educated on the fact that it can't all become housing, because of this projected in the state district at this point. Now, sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I don't know if you're done.
No, I haven't.
I don't know if you have any more numbers, because the 27% is what, because I know, I don't want this to get into a, a back and forth. You started with 27%, I think is where you about go off, right?
Yeah, so, just to reiterate, so my point was that this is not, this was not a law that was drafted to prohibit commercial power generation in the Ag District at all, at all. And, you know, we, I think we're doing our due diligence by having some protection for not all the land, not by any means, but that important land, the most valuable land from an agricultural standpoint. I think we have an obligation to do that. You know, my colleague, I respect his comments, said that I would like to have the Ag District completely agricultural. Well, that's not accurate. I support single-family homes being built in the Ag District, which is provided for by our current zoning. It would just imply that I am not for property rights, being supportive of this type of draft language. Nothing could be further from the truth. By putting this law forward, we are giving more rights, more rights to those landowners in the Ag District. Because right now, on our current zoning, you can have what the structures there, they have zero rights for it. So, that's not an accurate statement to say that we're looking to restrict, we're looking to expand property owner rights by letting them do these.
But I understand that, but I also, I think we.
But you can't do it.
With your restrictions, with your restrictions, it's possible, let these people develop their land within reasons, their property, that's my point.
I have some additional comments if I may.
So, thank you for sharing that information and everybody's perspective. I'll just share a few others, some of the same, some different. I'd like to walk back through your math at some point in time, supervisor. I had a lot of that math in my head and based some of my opinions on it, but I didn't follow you all the way through that one, so I want to, we'll come back to that. I just want to touch on a couple of the things. I think we're, we're really focusing on what will become the top. Um, I think we're, we're really focusing on what will become the topic around prime farmland and, and, and yes, there are other towns around the state that have, uh, that don't allow it, but we also saw several other examples of, of laws, including the, the model law, that there's ways to address it and still protect it. So I, I just want to make sure we don't miss the fact that in our draft language, we had embedded, um, or, or put in additional language that was, uh, to help, uh, protect, uh, prime farmland in compliance or direct alignment with the New York State Department of Agricultural and Markets. I think you referenced those guidelines. I mean, they have guidelines established for solar projects on prime farmland. So although we, in the, in the draft had some suggestion that we would allow it on, um, in the Dag, Ag District as well as possibly on prime farmland, we did, uh, put, uh, additional protections in place and, and that was the requirement, um, in, in one of the sections, uh, I believe, um, number seven, but it, they, they also had to comply with the guidelines established by, uh, you know, Department of Ag and Market. And those are the guidelines, if you've read them, are, uh, quite strict and, and somewhat limiting and specifically around the soils, um, uh, that, uh, might ever be removed. They have to be relocated. So you know, there's, there's a chance that those prime soils could still be put to use across somebody's property the way our current laws propose, or at least some versions of it. So I, I want to make sure that point's not missed. The, um, I, I think there's also a little bit of a slippery slope, at least from what I can understand. I mean, there's prime farmland outside of the Ag District, at least by the USDA's identification of, of the components that make up qualifier for prime farmland. And so I'm a little concerned about us possibly in, in another district not having the same restrictions around prime uh, farmland or soils deemed that way. So that's just another additional thought that's worth exploring a little bit further. And I, I, the, the existing zoning, I know there's some limitations, but the existing zoning does allow for some forms of construction that, um, when they meet those compliant, those requirements, that those are going to be much more impactful on prime farmland, including possibly removing the prime farmland from ever being returned to agricultural use. So, just a couple of additional, additional perspectives as we get ready to try to work through the language.
Uh, yeah, I appreciate that, Councilman. Uh, I, I just would add, you know, you bring up a good point about the possibility and I don't know, because I didn't look at any lands that are classified as prime farmland or soils of statewide importance outside of the, the Ag District, but I, I did not do that with good reason because, um, the, the Ag District, when it's created, uh, is renewed every eight years as required under state law. And so property owners have the ability to remove their parcels from ag land because, uh, the whole purpose of, of the Ag District is to afford additional protections to the landowner for the purpose of agriculture. In other words, if you have, uh, land in the Ag District, uh, and you have, and a neighbor moves in, we're seeing this in our community, we're seeing it in other communities. People are moving from, from the city, uh, out into more rural areas because they like, like the area. Uh, and they, they buy property to build a beautiful house right next to an active, uh, farm operation. Uh, and then becomes time for fall cleanup or the spreading of odor and you have those smells. And, well, I don't call them smells, but some people could call them, you know, offensive smells. And so because their property is contained within that Ag District, they have protection under state law that, uh, keep local governments or even the, uh, the neighbors from adverse impact in their operations that are doing best management practices. So, uh, so lands outside the Ag District, for whatever reason, by previous property owners have chose to either not be included in the, uh, uh, Ag District or to be removed or never wanting to be in it from the beginning. So, uh, there may be those types of soils, but in my view, because, uh, you know, no, no landowner for a long time has asked that they have those or be afforded those protections. I don't see that it's critical in our draft law, um, that we go out and do that kind of restriction. That, that's just my, my two cents on that.
And could I ask you, and, and we can take it sideline, we don't necessarily need to do it now, but just a very quick run through again. Help me understand how you got down to such a small percentage of prime, prime land. If there's about, and my numbers were 8,400 acres in the Ag District, uh, in total, of which about 4,800 acres have been identified by the USDA as prime farm, farm land or soils of statewide importance. I think our numbers are pretty close to that point. But how, how did you get down to such a small number that you think that that's what we're really only trying to protect?
So, uh, I, I, I don't know if I heard it correctly. So the total acreage, just to back up, is, uh, 8,386 acres in the Ag District. Uh, all that total, 4,575 are deemed prime soil and prime farmland and soils of statewide importance, which is approximately 55% of that total. Uh, however, not all of that land is used for farmland. Uh, so I asked, uh, Soil and Water to, uh, map out for me those lands that are being actively farmed. It has 3,898 acres, which drops that 55% number down to 46%. So basically, uh, land used in production agriculture is only 46% of total acreage in the Ag District. So then looking at that total number of actively farmed, uh, land in the Ag District, only 1,947 acres are classified as prime soil. And, uh, then another 323 are classified as farmland of statewide importance. So that 398, 3,198 number, uh, that's, that's the actively farmed land out of 8,386 acres. So, you know, less than half the district is being utilized for farm purposes, agricultural purposes. So that's how I got to the 27% number.
Thank you.
So, uh, you know, we can come back, uh, and go through, uh, that discussion further, but, uh, I'd like to go through, you know, some of the front loaded language before we get into definitions and things like that, that to keep things working. We're kind of running out of time here and I think we're never going to do an hour tonight.
Yeah.
So, uh, just kind of find it right here. So, uh, I read through section A of 149-99. Um, I know some board members have some comments for that. If you want to go over, I'm not willing to go over any of those comments that you had along the way for section A.
If, if what we have struck out in the red, then, then I have no additional comments.
Well, that, that is, that, that's kind of my question. You notice I have, um, three board members' names on that. That was what this entire discussion was just about. The only thing in A that we were discussing is whether to include or not include the prime farmland or, uh, far, uh, farmland of statewide importance. So there was like a split on the board and I was wondering if there was going to be a consensus moving forward on that. But it seems like, and correct me if I'm wrong supervisor, but we kind of want to put that to the side right now so we can do a lot of the smaller, um, you know, the site plan issues and then ultimately go back up and decide, okay, now that we've got through this.
I think in an interest of keeping, moving forward on, on the, on the draft law, we probably should go through where we can find common ground immediately.
Absolutely.
And then we can come back around to get at sticky issues of that. Sounds good to me. That worked. Um, so, uh, so we'll, we'll move on to make a moment. Is that what everybody's okay with? All right. So, uh, going down to, uh, section B on 149-99, uh, site land renewal allocation requirements, uh, number one, uh, if the property with proposed projects to be leased, uh, legal consent among all parties specifying uses of the land for the duration of the project, including easements and other agreements shall be submitted. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Number two, a scale site plan, uh, showing the layout of the system, including all accessory equipment and facilities bearing the stamp and signature of a professional engineer or architect licensed by New York is required. I think that's pretty straightforward. Number three, the equipment specification sheet shall be documented submitted for all panels, significant components mounting systems and inverters that are to be installed. Uh, number four, special requirements for development operational large-scale systems in the R5 district. In consideration of the heavy concentration of ag uses in the, uh, district and the overriding interest to protect ag uses in the town and row, the following additional requirements shall be met for any system located in the R5, uh, zoned area. Uh, the first one is A, the applicants shall indicate on the site plan and describe in written narrative form what best management practices are being undertaken to preserve ag use of land in and around the area that is designated for the large-scale system. Such practices include, but are not limited to, the provision of barriers to securely separate wildlife, farm animals from the equipment, quantitative assessment of the ag lands and, uh, uh, before natural installation of large-scale, uh, system, in the inclusion of measures to maximize ag use of the land in and around the area of large-scale system after the system's fully installed and operational. Again, this was, I think this was taken from, um, some of my sort of draft language, uh, that is another law mistake. Uh, any, any questions, comments on that? If not, uh, we hand to what would be B, a visual impact assessment of the large-scale system and the inclusion of the first phase of the development, if relevant, and a full build-out of the system. The assessment shall include rendered drawn images of the view shed from publicly owned lands, ID parks, roads, streets, facilities, description of the area impacted, and mitigated measures taken to reduce the visual impact. Any questions, comments on that? All right. Uh, so what would be a new subsea, uh, two, four, section C, section, uh, relates to screening. Uh, to the maximum extent practical, uh, large-scale systems are to be positioned so that the maximum screening from the view of pedestrians, bicyclists, motorists on the public right of way and from the view of neighboring property owners is achieved. Uh, supplemental architectural features such as burning grade planting fence insulation that will harmonize with the character of property and surrounding area shall be used to screen, uh, the view of the system.
So if, um, you can see that I have kind of a ridiculous, uh, suggestion there, but I want to make sure you stop and talk about it. Okay. So that's why I said I'm on a hundred percent screening. I know that's impossible, but I want to make sure we stop and talk about it. Um, I really, I don't know if I cut you off, but, but, okay. Uh, I do find some of the suggestions in the, um, model law with certain type of tree inside of a tree that should go in. Uh, I actually think this is where maybe I need to be bow out a little bit, but this is where, um, but I, I guess I may as well, where I think we should take out what, what this says. The screening and landscaping plan, just specified locations and elevation site plans. Let's be sure the end of reviews and will comprise structures, landscaping, integrated, used to screen and or mitigate any adverse aesthetic effects. System, landscape screening shall comprise of a minimum of, insert number here, one evergreen tree at least six feet high, at number one, planting, I think, right, no. Plus two supplemental shrubs at the reasonable discretion of town and row planning and order, remember the reviewing words in. Oh, this is, all planted within each 10 linear feet of the solar energy system. Now, I like that that, that's in this proposed law by, or in my sort of law. Because I think, you know, if you put a, say, evergreen tree, year one, it's only six feet high. Year two, it might go, but, but year three, it might go three feet, right? So, um, obviously didn't screen them. I'm saying this because I brought it forward, I didn't screen the, uh, the solar array, but I think planting of trees, I don't know if there were supplemental shrubs, not, not for nothing, but I don't think a shrub's going to be much for a 15 foot high, um, array. I really like this as somewhere in the screening part that a certain number of trees should be planted at every so many feet. Because when they do grow, it will look like a nice hedge rock and you won't see anything behind it. Um, city engineers of these systems wouldn't put them in a spot they would grow so tall that they would uh, hinder the sunlight from getting to them. So if there's a way to add some specifics to the screening, I'd like to do that.
Yeah, I think that's a good recommendation. Uh, probably because of the greatest concern those that are following this, uh, or have seen them in other municipalities is they don't want to see, they don't want to see glass over, you know, tons of acres, hundred acres. Uh, and I think anything that we can do that, um, puts that requirement out there that, um, if you're going to put that type of structure in there, it will be shielded per technical. Um, you know, I, I think that's a good idea.
And, and even though the farmers say if you treat that as, you gotta put it in, I, I mean, only because again, I, I don't want to restrict, for the sake of restricting, I want to be able to work with everybody. There's a way to keep things hidden in plain sight. I'd like to do that ultimately.
I can tell you that, uh, you know, I've met, passed several years, had dozens of meetings with different developers and most of them, not a problem, having to, to do the screening.
Okay.
I don't think that would be an issue.
Well, in these, our writing type treats are everyone to put in. If you find that one's, one's still not that expensive for true, considering the overall cost and benefit financially that these projects are going to bring to, uh, the landowner and the, uh, electric companies that, you know, we're looking to work alongside. So I don't have a problem with any sort of, uh, screening, uh, requirements. It's a live, you know, live screening requirement, um, in some, in the land.
And I think the only challenge would be it would depend on the parcel. If you had somebody that wanted to put it on incline, let's say there's a major, just a highway that goes, excuse me, in front of it, um, there may be some challenges because of topography, but you know, I think if we have that screen close enough to, uh, where the public is, uh, obviously if they're flying over the property to see it, can't ruin about that, but from the row, um, you know, I, I think most developers are willing to, uh, work with this, this value as an issue. But to have it in the, uh, in the, um, ordinance, uh, for.
Right. Okay. That was my two cents.
No, 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 not because I know what you're reading from. So I would put that in, into the screening. But is the question I do have is, this is the exact language that we talked about in tier two, the screening. So do you want it in there?
Right. Um, do you mean the types of screening or?
I was comf, may I?
Yeah.
So I was comfortable with this language, um, here that, uh, in, in, uh, in type two, but I agree with what, uh, Councilman Newton, I believe the supervisor just said. You know, since, since then and since further review, my recommendation would be very similar to what uh, was just made, but to be really specific, I had a hard time hearing, uh, Kyle, I apologize. I, I specifically think we should use for model law, uh, section 6A, 6B1 and 6B2, and then the last paragraph in that section, um, Carl, if you're just making note, I don't need to recite them all, but. Carmen, please making note, I don't need to recite them all, but, um, I, I agree that we should have stronger, um, language in the type three than the type two.
I think what you also might want to, um, think about is to put all of that in there and then also say to the planning board, you know, you folks have been doing this, you understand the screening for other projects. Now, what do you think will work here? What have you found to be difficult with some developers or some engineers? Just to kind of get, have, have them focus on this as well.
All right. I appreciate your time on that. And the other.
I, I also think it's worth, uh, not losing sight of the fact that it's somewhat related that on some, on these solar systems, I mean, SEAKER is going to play a role in this because, you know, I think SEAKER on projects bigger than 10 acres require a defined visual impact. So I think we've got additional protection, uh, through some other mechanisms.
Well, it does, we already have a, a visual impact assessment required in the, in this law too.
I understood. And I was, I guess I was just pointing out, I think that there's some requirements under SEAKER that define the type, well, anyways, I'm, I'm with you.
As long as that is one trick that we'll give it. All right. So, uh, we've got, uh, I think what I'd like to do is, uh, I end off, end at, uh, where six begins of the decommissioning, unless the board wants to keep going, but uh, we do have two items, uh, for to go through. Uh, last one is a new section D, uh, which states that prior to final decision on the site plan and for review process, the applicant shall meet with the town assessor to discuss the tax assessment, tax assessment of the permanent conversion of land area previously designated for Ag purposes, uh, to accommodation of the large-scale system, preliminary findings of the assessor shall be reported as part of the process. I don't think, I don't think the town has the ability, you know, I, I think where this was going, correct me if I'm wrong, is that it had a, uh, an impact, um, town taxes in whatever way, shape, or form that we need to take that into consideration. Am I accurate on that?
No, no. Um, what this, yeah, you have your, your Ag exemption.
Yeah.
And if you're converting from corruptible Ag to solar, you have to meet with the assessor because you'd have to take that exemption off of.
Right.
That being said, there was a, a case that I've sent to you folks a month or two ago that just came down that said, well, you know, you can still get your Ag exemption, but the solar panel folks have to pay the taxes on, on the solar panel part of it. That was just one case out there. Um, so that is just to keep the assessor involved in the situation because it does matter how you.
Why don't you just with that? Yeah. Okay, all right.
Uh, and then item five is a property operation and maintenance plan, uh, separate from the plan for maintenance and upkeep of the solar equipment. Associated facilities with trilling land shall be required. Such plan shall describe continuing, uh, maintenance and property upkeep such as mowing and trimming as appropriate at sole discretion of the planning board, escrow account, or letter of credit may be required to cover the expenses associated with the funding, funding the maintenance plan in the event the applicant or designated responsible entity is not able to fulfill the terms of maintenance plan as required as part of site plan review. So does this mean that the planning board has a sole discretion? I mean, it's not reading it, I'm reading it back, but the planning board can decide whether or not an escrow account or letter of credit may be required to cover this.
Yes.
So, what, um, why would the planning board not do that? What's an example of what a planning board would not do that?
If they don't feel that it's necessary to have it, if they feel that it's in a location that the maintenance is not going to be that bad, they figure that the uh, maintenance plan is sufficient to abide by what needs to be done. It just allows them to have the discretion rather than requiring an escrow, because we're also looking down, and we're not going to talk about it tonight, with the decommissioning requiring a law or or something to that, the decommissioning plan as well.
All right. I think, uh, I think I'd be more comfortable that not allowing it to be at a discretion that we spelled out black and white.
That's right.
I prefer to have it in that. I think, I think that that makes her job easier too.
So, yes, we want. Okay. Remove the discretion, require escrow.
Yeah. Uh, Alan, you okay with that?
Yes.
Anybody else do it?
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, so I didn't realize six was kind of extensive. I mean, we can continue to go through it, or we can end here tonight and come back and continue to go through. Uh, everything's kind of, uh, Tuesday. What's, uh?
I'm sorry, what?
We'll schedule, uh.
I'll give you my.
We'll schedule our next workshop Tuesday night at the Orbin, uh, where currently.
We'll schedule it then, not, not schedule it for that. No, no, no. Okay.
Half the meeting, comma, you will schedule.
Yeah. Okay, yeah.
That would be fine.
I'm okay with that. Okay, so, uh, hopefully we made, uh, we're getting there.
Getting there.
Uh, well, thank everybody for their input and, uh, Alan for joining us remotely. Uh, are you counting ballots, Alan?
He's into that.
I think maybe I'll count on your counting ballots, yes.
So, all right, well, thanks for everybody's help and, uh, we will reconvene, uh, on Tuesday, Tuesday. All right, thank you.
Thank you.